That is kind of moving target. I think we're darn close and I think the stuff that is problematic at this point is small unless there are some major changes. We also did get a lot more written comments. Most of those came either before. Recent ones are on front and they're by the phonological reverse order. So, for example, we got one yesterday. It's not Rachel, that was our printer. Our print shop does a much better job than that.
Okay.
Other than that, I thought it was probably best just to go through page by page because there's so many changes. Both the maps as well as the text, mostly editorial, Kelly edited for us, went through, did not change substance, tried to make it more relevant. So, we can go through and.
You run the pages?
I can do it from here.
I can do it.
Okay, cool.
You guys are a good team.
We are. Let's switch up. And I don't know why it's so long dated. Not really illegal, it's a letter size, but somehow it's showing up. Resolution, I guess I did, I'm not sure what they did. Yeah, good luck, I don't know, I couldn't get it, to show up both ways.
Is it in like page setup?
We shifted the resolution, so it was a little better. We're back in Baltimore. If you look on the inner cover, for example, we included, the suggestion would include the graphics that some council put together on all their calls. Bend down the bottom of the page, Andrew actually turned it into language. I thought we should stick in, I don't know if he adheres to the information. He was just kind of discussing concepts, but he was looking at.
This was something he put in my hands right as the meeting kind of ended. So, none of you have seen this language, he's not here to defend it. Also, the picture is something I thought of in our last meeting as I looked back and I saw the council's vision, perhaps it should be incorporated somewhere in here. But again, that's up to you guys, so. But again, take a look at what Andrew has written here and maybe he'll show up and explain his thoughts there.
Well, not, rather poetic what he said, just layout wise, I don't like flipping things, but the, our Littleton map rather small when it's in that direction. Do we flip it and take up the whole page? And if we have some opening statement, another page.
Yeah.
Really can't read that map, it's almost, it's nice and colorful, but it means nothing. Can't read it.
Yeah, and I don't know if Andrew's words really belong here, it's just we thought we would put it so it'd be one of the first things we discuss tonight, but.
I like it.
I don't think there's anything in there that necessarily wouldn't agree with.
The only part I'm thinking about within that is the kind of place you find once in a hundred years seems to mix place and time to me. I like the way the statement reads, but that is the only thing that stands out to me is that.
I think you got two periods, too many periods at the end.
Twenty periods at the end, yes.
Rachel pointed that out to our printers, so we do have, we have changed that on, it shouldn't be on the screen, hopefully it's gone from the screen now.
Yeah, whether we decide to add it or not, at the top, we're stuck in the mediocrity of suburban sprawl.
Where are you looking?
At the end of the top, first line to the beginning of the second line, stuck in the mediocrity of suburban sprawl.
I would, I would just take that sentence out. It's subjective.
Yeah, it doesn't really flow very well.
I think it still reads fine, if Littleton must rebel against becoming suburbia, we are the kind of place where people have talent, are attracted to live, I mean, the other one's more editorial. I tend to agree with the hundred year statement. I mean, we could be a place where you can find every day, not every hundred years, so. What does everybody else think about taking the second sentence out?
Yeah, that's fine.
Which one?
We are not a mass packaged place or stuck.
Yeah. I've always rebelled against Littleton's sometimes smugness, you know, we think we're better than anybody else.
And it's a negative statement, let's stay positive.
Yeah, so, I mean, the word mediocrity's got to go at least, or take the whole sentence out.
Sentence out unless somebody.
Yeah.
What about the last sentence?
Well, I like the sentence, if we can just maybe take out something about the time relationship. Littleton is the kind of place you find rarely, and we appreciate and take out and not lightly how special that is.
A place where you rarely find.
Yeah, exactly.
Rarely, find, rarely find.
Kind of.
And appreciate.
How old are we?
Yeah.
I'm not going to tell you.
What about, we want our city to always be elegant, something elegant, is that?
I don't know.
I mean, I don't know if I would put any better, it just isn't.
Or if that's where the hundred came in.
Are we elegant?
I don't know, I feel more rustic.
I'm not elegant, yeah.
I like rustic.
It's been a long time since I was in second grade.
It depends what day, I guess.
Okay, what I've heard so far is we have a positive outlook for our future, Littleton is the kind of place you find rarely, and we appreciate how special that is.
Well, it's awkward the way you've said it, but.
Yeah, I agree.
Good.
Any other wordsmithing better than what I said?
No, that's fine.
Give a sense of where you'd like it to be, does this come towards the front?
Yeah, I don't know, I agree that the picture is kind of small, but when you turn things sideways, it gets a little awkward too.
It does.
Having to like that.
Yeah, I understand.
The other option is that we've got a free page at the back, we could put it on the inside cover. And then get back to the rear cover, we want to put the rear cover of a document, but there's a blank page, inside a blank page.
So, on the back cover, you could flip it.
Well, inside is blank too.
We put half of it on the inside front cover and half on the inside back cover.
Put it sideways, there.
Yeah.
Right.
Split it right in the middle?
Just think of a pool now.
Or is it, or is it just a matter of balance on the page? You brought it down a little bit and the other one.
You have to chill something else when you fold them.
It seems to me that the problem is almost just the white space gap in the middle, that if you block those together and balance the space at the top and the bottom, still, I mean, it's not the way it's, the picture's really intended, but that might be more visual.
Then the question editor, are your eyes that much better than you can actually read?
I can read.
I can read it, but. The fact that it goes to the edge is kind of.
Speaking for the plus sixteen.
It's kind of cropped on the left too, it seems.
Contention of Littleton, no, 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 no. Stick it on the back page and flip it.
Well, I don't think we want to dwell on, you know, where that goes, I think we need to rely upon smart graphic people.
One other option is just to take the letter from the mayor, make the opening page a two-page spread.
Yeah. Bring it all the way to us.
If you want to work on that, I like the idea that it's up front because it's kind of the vision and they did it for the vision, so it should be kind of the opening graphic, I like that, with a letter from the mayor. Okay, moving into the document itself.
Taken out on the table of contents, editor thought we should take out the individual transformative perspectives, the three of those, just because they're so small, all the same page, seemed unnecessary.
Yeah.
Having individual items for.
What are you taking out? What are you taking out?
The transformative perspectives, we used to have each of them listed with the same page number repeated, they're all on the same page, page 2.1, and so we repeated that three times.
Okay.
And the editor said, well, it seems unnecessary in the table of contents, you have the general heading here and it's a small little section, so, much to do that just to simplify things. Give us a little more of a.
Your period after two is dropped down.
There's a few, there's a few problems.
If the timeline is of its own, I can't get it back out, it's not in a box, I can't get rid of it.
The 1.4 on the back side's messed up too.
You have a period, you need to have it over the other one, so.
Yeah, next page, 1.4, figure B.
Okay, we've got, I apologize for the numbers falling off here, they're correct on.
Yeah, 1.11.
When we print it on different printers, the formatting seems to go kaboody a little bit on us, but I guarantee you it will be printed properly.
It's too crowded, you're going to have to do double line and indent, neighborhoods, activity areas, comma.
Yeah, you could really.
Next line and then indent, it's crowding, the numbers looks awkward.
You could make this a lot longer on this, on this back page, for sure, there's lots of white space.
Next page.
Let's start with 1.1.
Where are we getting the pictures?
Can I keep changing?
Well, the only reason I'm asking is because there's several pictures of kids in here, and I'm sure we've gotten approval to do those.
This one was from the calendar, a lot of the things actually came from the Littleton calendar.
Oh, good, so then that's taken care of then.
Right. Any of the others have come off the Indian Library from the city, so.
Okay.
Any major text changes here, Dennis?
My comment, and I know that Ladonna had a comment on the purpose, I thought that the use section or paragraph should have, well, an overall comment about the wording, and you'll see how it's addressed when we get to page 1.6. This document is only a part of the bigger comprehensive plan document. When it's all said and done, it'd be, it'd be this, these pages plus the neighborhood plans attached, that'd be chapter three, so to speak. And then you would have the corridor plans attached, then you would have the activity area plans attached. So, to kind of respond to the, how heavy is our document presentation, when it's all said and done, this document's going to be a couple, two, three inches thick, and you put them all together, and that's going to represent the complete authoritative comprehensive plan 2013 document. And so, I wanted to make sure that we're not writing or using words just in this document that only speak to this. It needs to, even though we're only amending this for the, for the original comp plan, it will ultimately address the small area plans and the other plans. So, under use, we talk about what's in this particular section, the policies, the goals, the transformative perspectives, but we don't talk about how that relates to the small area plans and the corridor plans.
I was wondering along that line, within the purpose or use, I thought it under purpose, and it was after, I think Ladonna, one of Ladonna's comments had also included the activity areas in that last sentence.
Right.
To make sure we're clear, but it seems like a lot of the comments we get seem to be, well, this isn't detailed enough, or, you know, there's a lack of understanding maybe between what the purpose is, but you don't need a sentence somewhere up front here, because these things are also going to be approved and adopted at different times, not just now, but in the future. It says something to the effect that the citywide plan provides general goals and policies to guide Littleton's development, whereas the small area plans address specific issues, challenges, and opportunities in developing the various communities that comprise Littleton. Something that makes it clear that this isn't trying to address specific situations, because I get confused, as I was reading back through it, I think it gets a little confusing when you read through whether, when people are looking at this, they're talking about the comprehensive plan in total with this, or this is just the citywide plan.
I agree, I mean, so, I actually wrote something, but I forgot to bring it. And my, my particular comment is the last sentence on the left side, in those cases where it does not provide specific direction, users should base their analysis on more general transformative perspective, so on and so forth. So, why would somebody go from specific direction to more general? Why wouldn't they go more specific if they went more direction? And that would guide you to the small area plans. So, where these, where these general goals and policies don't give you enough directive, you should then go to the smaller area plans, the corridor plans, and activity area plans for more specific direction.
Yeah, it seems to me that, part of the jump I have there that I think is difficult within that is that throughout that use section though, it's talking about comprehensive plan, it keeps referencing, when I'm reading this, I'm considering it like the city plan. And so, I think that's where some confusion comes in, because I think you're right, you'd say, let's go to the small area plans, but those are really part of the comprehensive plan.
Right, chapter three.
It's not that we're not adopting those, it's just that, we're just looking at a part of it. And so, I think that that's a question of, we need to be, seems, we need to be real careful with language when we describe it. And I may be sensitive this generally, to make sure that we're saying comprehensive plan where we mean everything as a whole.
Everything.
And when we're talking about just this part we're looking at, that's the, the citywide plan we're describing. The other thing, I, I had the same problem, the sentence before I really struggled with because it says, because the plan cannot anticipate all issues and questions, it does not include policies that will address every situation. I, I wonder if the citywide plan, I don't know if it addresses any situation besides in general, in, in general terms, but when I thought about the comprehensive plan, you may address some specific situations there, and so I think that's difficult in this introduction to treat it from this specific, you know, citywide plan and consider it when you have the whole document together. It's tough.
We can expand on the second sentence in that first paragraph, or the end sentence. Comprehensive plan includes both the citywide plan provided here and in more detail, while area plans for neighborhoods and transportation-based corridors provided separately, we can kind of expand.
I think it might be worth it, if we do that, to also say just explicitly there that those are being, there's a plan that's figure D for a plan to review and approve those. And that way, when people read that, you can point to it and you can say, yeah, we're not forgetting that those details on your corner have to be looked at, we just can't do everything.
I think what'd be helpful too is maybe we replicate the big circle in the center which says comprehensive plan and all the elements, and maybe we repeat that portion on that cover page, so you get an idea that comprehensive is more than what you're just looking at here. Yeah, and you're right, it's, it's the one thing that's tripping everybody up.
Well, the way this is stated, the point that you were making about the last sentence under use saying, in those cases, it does not provide specific direction, based their analysis on the more general, and then you're referring back to the same plan that's not specific, it's almost like, strike that on the more general, from the word general on, strike it, and, and use the word specific, and go right into the next sentence, rely more on the specific neighborhood corridor and area plans, because you're already in this plan that's not specific enough. And you can't go back and rely on these transformative perspectives that weren't specific enough, and it's as if that stuff's already here, you've got to think two years out when it's already done.
Exactly.
And it needs to read properly.
And for now, the, the smaller area plans are what they are, because we haven't devised them yet.
Right, right, and they will be there until they are done, right.
And so, we have to, we have to point people to those documents because they are part of the comprehensive plan, they are the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, I mean, you still point to them now, it's not that they're not there, it's just that you may say they're outdated right now, but that's what we use.
And so, that kind of brings up the question, Dennis, on how this, when this, when this gets, you know, when this, if this gets adopted, again, the table of contents makes it look like it's everything, because it stops at chapter two and then there's nothing else. So, ultimately, shouldn't this be just attached to the neighborhood plans?
Yeah, we should have, we should have a table of contents that shows you the whole thing and how to get there.
Because we're amending the blue book, and half of the blue book stays the same. We're just adding a new part in front of it, correct?
Correct.
Getting out of here.
So, this is being amended, and we're just taking this and putting it here and keeping this. Right? So, when it's all said and done, it's still, it's still going to have a bound document, but the first half's new, the second half is going to be updated, but it's still one document, and then we will add corridor plans and activity area plans.
Each one gets updated, will we get a whole new every time?
Well, that's a good question, just in terms of what do you do? Do you keep them separate, like the downtown plan is so large, do you want to stick it in something where it really?
Right.
Where the balance off with everything else, or do you keep it separate and just make sure people know it's there, reference it here somehow?
Well, that's going to come up when we talk about the chart.
But, isn't, if this is mostly a digital document instead of being handed out in print all the time anyway, on websites, it's, it's noted by, you know, a, a link, a PDF link, so it doesn't matter that it's bigger or whatever, it's, it's a section of the plan.
You do have the full table of contents.
Yes.
You have the whole thing, so you know where to go.
Right.
So, I think some of the confusion in some of the hearings on rezone may be, you know, what documents have authority, or what documents represent the comp plan? I know there was confusion as to whether or not the Littleton corridor study was actually part of the comp plan or not, whether it was adopted, and, you know, at this point, we're trying to bring that all together, so that at the end of the day, you get a rezone, staff pulls out everything that's in here, and this is the comp plan, and this is the authority for the comp plan.
The thought for now is that we add a section three, three on the table of contents, small area plans, and somehow identify that we're going to set the document at this point.
Yeah, I think we redo the table of contacts, citywide plan becomes A, and then we list all the other ones, neighborhood plans, B, corridor plan, C.
Okay.
But I think it's okay to, to add a notation that those are, I don't know how you would word it, but they're not here yet.
Yeah.
Or they're here, but they're not.
For the 81 plan or something.
Right.
Yeah, could you even say after, you know, Centennial Neighborhood last updated in the year or something?
Mm-hmm.
I think that makes it very clear that we're not working on a new document.
Still there, still in effect.
Right, okay.
What about, on your, I'm still looking at that, in those cases?
Right.
Sentence, and I, I think I understand what they're trying to do, say, look, the first thing you'd do is you'd look for the specific direction, you might get in the small area plans, maybe the it's caused some of the confusion, and maybe if we're just more explicit and said, in those cases where small area plans do not provide specific directions, direction, users should base their analysis on the more general goals and policies contained in the citywide plan, and that would.
That's the opposite.
Well, I, but I don't think it is, when you get a problem that comes up, usually, I mean, usually the rule for kind of construction for figuring out a problem is that you say, look, if I have a specific direction somewhere that just answers this question, I go with that specific direction. So, if someone says, we're going to do this, I look at that answer, if I don't have that anywhere, I say, okay, well, what are the principles I can use to solve the problem? I mean, we could do it backwards, but I think that what, it seems to me that what the sentence is trying to say.
But the first sentence specifically speaks to the comp plan, not the neighborhood plans, I don't know.
Well, but the comp plan includes the neighborhood plans, I guess that's the confusion I keep coming up with, is the comp plan's everything, and it seems to me that the problem we have when we look at it is sometimes we start to talk about the comp plan like it's just these pieces.
Yeah.
But if we have a neighborhood plan that says, we're going to do this, or this is what this neighborhood wants to do, and, and that specific direction, it seems like that actually has more authority for us than these general principles. But what we can say is, something comes up and the small area plan doesn't address it, and you're sitting there going, I don't have any specific direction, how do I decide? Then you go, okay, what's the fallback when I don't have a specific direction? Well, the fallback is, I look at the principles that are contained in here, and we discuss those, and we say, how does that work? And I think that the confusion on this comes up because you can't, it's not clear that those are both contained within the comprehensive plan.
Well, if, if you're, if we're addressing the principles in here, we say citywide plan.
That's right.
If we address it more specific, it's the small area plan.
Yes.
So, we got to not use the comprehensive plan words unless we're, we mean the whole document.
I agree.
Bingo.
Yeah. So, Dennis?
Good.
Fix it.
Fix it.
Just work on that paragraph, because you may want to circulate that.
That makes a good point, that makes all sense, so. The other thing you've mentioned maybe too was just a discussion about the authority. You said we really didn't have anything in here about the authority of the plan or the authority of the board and what that is legally.
Well.
Is this what you're thinking of, or are you actually thinking about?
I can't remember where I put it.
Well, I think you had it here, but I'm not sure.
I'll, I'll send the email out.
Go at your time.
It needs to be clear that the comprehensive plan is an advisory document, and it's not a code, it's not a zoning code, it's not the law, it's an advisory document to inform regulatory decision-making. Decision, decision-making. I just think it'd be good to clearly state what its authority is, because I know sometimes comprehensive plans are used like they're the law. Ultimately, we tend to use them when we want to use them, but I think it's good to separate their role versus what a zoning code does, versus what a subdivision regs would do.
I think the term we use is, you should zone consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
But you have to determine what's consistent.
But by doing that right up front, right off the bat, establishes what this document, what its authority is.
Yeah, under purpose, we need to do that.
Yeah. Okay.
Next page.
Now that we, okay.
The map, we shifted around, it was, we were going farther north last time, we brought it farther south, we added EIA, took off the local streets, left just the major street, added the hardware system, and ended up with something. On 1.3, we shifted the description, the caption for each of the photographs.
I think you say that, I don't think that photo was not a good photo.
Pretty grim.
It's kind of pixelated, and I'll go take you a better photo, maybe.
Which one of the?
The high school.
Actual high school? It's not a great photo, it came out.
So, so Dennis, I promised some photographs, but after I said that, I But after I said that, I went on like a six-week vacation, no, a six-day vacation.
Yeah, we've been waiting on you.
But I'm free this week, so I might be able to do that.
January right now, okay.
We changed this caption because there was concern, I don't remember if it was Andrew, I think, we weren't saying anything really positive about the school district, and it's certainly one of the reasons why Littleton's been a success and it's grown as it has.
We also made a point of adding Jefferson County School District, because Phil Mark is in Jefferson County.
Yeah, under demographics, the third one, the middle of the third line, in the bottom of that section on the first column, resulted in spelling.
As a result?
Same trends have resulted in an increase in desire. Third line up from the bottom, above the picture on the left column.
Result.
Good eye.
Result.
Yes.
The whole show kind of been more with this, this is called the dashboard, but rather than be specific, I think we just talked about the general website, which we hope is still around in a few years.
So we're done with 1.3? 1.4 and 5?
Shifted the average household size, including the demographics, quite dramatic.
Do, is there a reason that we have these charts in here, and then a lot of the other, every other chart in the back? Is there...
Of the ones that we talked about, there are a few things that seem to be most significant in terms of the data that got up when the issue was presented.
Okay.
One is our Asian population, and one is the school district in terms of the enrollment. And then the part of that is, we also have an Asian population that has additional needs. So how do we provide housing and services for our Asian population, as well as trying to attract? So these two kind of keep being over and over again. This is the data, whereas a lot of the data in the back is significant, but wasn't as much a center discussion.
Well, they are referenced in the demographic text, so they are relevant in this text.
These are the original graphs, and they're, somebody requested that more data be added.
Right.
If we put them all in the front, then it kind of covers the...
No, I wasn't suggesting.
This comes down to, this comes down to layout, it's just kind of, I mean, it's difficult when you run it out, so I don't know if you can see it. I think, I figure BMC would be easier if we had them opposite of that demograph, you know, if they're on the same, you'd see them at the same time as you read the demographics page. That's just a layout question, that is hard to do, but they are both referenced on 1.3, and it just makes it trickier, or you don't know, you can't, you can't do it as easily.
Yeah, yeah. We could perhaps bring the average household size onto 1.3, and use a picture.
Are you adding a page or something at some point in the front? Because I wonder, when you add it, if these two won't be face to face.
This is a good...
And I, I think it's just something to think about as you do layout, too, or if we have someone to look at that.
Or if they're next to each other.
If we move the letter to the mayor as page one or something, and scoot everything back.
Yeah, slip the page in there somewhere, yeah. Where's the graphic?
Just to mess up your page numbering in the table of contents.
It's easier to say, ew.
I, I agree, if there's a way to, if there's a way to get that opposite, the wording makes it easier, but so...
I think that's true for the table of contents, too, it'd be nice to have those facing each other, so we don't forget.
Graphic issues, you need to work out, we don't need to debate how to do it.
Throw a picture of the city building in there, so we'd love.
1.5, planning process.
Got rid of the picture of our community development director.
Yeah, somebody complained about that picture.
Oh, it's replaced with some grandchildren there.
They recognize those two kids.
Did we get permission for that?
There was a special request. Get rid of the old man and...
I just made fun of you, I didn't say replace it, but I had one of the boards sitting in a restaurant tilting a beer or something.
I don't want to look at my picture either.
So other than who's in the picture?
We updated the numbers for the flyer loads of the website.
Hey, Chuck, you've been getting all my minor edits really, really well.
Good, good, they were great, thank you.
Okay.
Next page.
1.6 is my fault.
You want to just jump to your, because I do like what you did here, Randy.
Yeah, what, and my apologies for not looking at this sooner, I was so focused on the goals and policies, I didn't really read much in the front part. And my apologies to Dennis if I offend him, but the related plans section was completely confusing to me, and I'm a planner. And I really could not understand how documents related to documents, and so I rewrote it. So, under related plans, the text to the right here with the edits, I'll just let you read it, if you haven't already, and then we can talk about it. And then some of the edits are just putting different words that Glenn put in there, which is, so let's take, let's take a few minutes and read that.
The spelling of the title is mine, not Randy's. If you haven't figured out, there's no spell check on that.
I figured that out.
Not at all?
Yeah, mine was.
I figured that must have been the case. There are programs you can add, the spell check across applications.
That makes sense, there's another way to do it, I just haven't figured it out.
What are you working on?
Someone wants to replace in the first sentence.
What's that?
We took out replace, but you still need a verb in there.
Oh, yeah. They need to refine the wording, so, let me know when you're done. Everybody close? So I'll go ahead and explain a little bit. This is where I really felt that we needed to provide clarity as to exactly what the comprehensive plan represents. The original write-up talks about the comprehensive plan, small area plans, and then there's a discussion about the small area plans, how many there are, what they, are they going to be replaced and updated? And then it talks about the downtown neighborhood plan, and then it talks about the Littleton Boulevard Corridor Study Plan, but it didn't really say, you know, how it all fits together. And so what I wanted to do is, is to clearly say right up front, 2013 comprehensive plan is two sections, the citywide and the small area plans, period. There's two main sections. The citywide plan is what, is the foundation for the entire comprehensive plan, it's the vision, it's the goals, policies. And then the small area plans are the more specific objective strategies, metrics. I think we really need to do metrics as we get into more detail, so we can have measurements as to whether things are being accomplished. And then I felt like it was important to define what the small area plans were. And so the neighborhood plan represents the different neighborhoods, they're going to be amended as deemed necessary by the city council. And then there's a list of those plans on the chart, and that'll provide more information about what has priority. And then those plans will be updated through a process of public outreach conducted to get public input, in that the boundaries would be revised based upon current conditions, period. Just, that's what they are. And then the corridor plans are the linear plans along major arterials, their boundaries, the neighborhood plan boundaries and the corridor plan boundaries would not overlap, or else there's confusion. And that the corridor plan also provides objective strategies, guidelines, and measurable metrics, but they're specific to those corridors. And then finally, the activity areas are targeted areas that we have deemed potential areas for redevelopment or development, through either economic development, joint ventures, special districts, overlay, that would be an overlay district possibly, that would help encourage development. But I thought that it was important to note that those activity areas aren't necessarily set in stone, they may change, based upon market conditions. And just because they're on this map doesn't necessarily mean that's all of them, or that we're going to do all of them. It may be that in four or five years, the Ridge Road Activity Area really isn't that important anymore. So there had to be some flexibility in there, that we could change it based upon the planning board and the council deciding that. And within, within the process of doing a corridor plan, a lot of the, all the activity areas fall within a corridor plan. So you could do a corridor plan, and at the same time do an activity area study as part of the same study.
I would hope so.
That way you're killing both, you're getting both of them done. You just have an extra chapter in the corridor study that focuses on that activity area. So that's mentioned in there. And then the last part was relating to the fact that there were other documents that we referenced in the process of putting together the comprehensive plan. So what are your thoughts on how that reads?
Just to, just to get organized here, are you replacing the entire related plans originally with this, or some of these paragraphs?
From related plans to number three, keeping that figure D.
Figure D stays?
Yeah.
Okay.
I didn't mess with that.
All right.
Just under related plans, this will replace it.
I don't know that we need figure D, quite frankly. I think the table is self-explanatory, I don't know that we need to explain it.
Yeah.
That's my thinking, everything from related plans all the way through on that page could go...
My thought there was, I don't know why we were defining what the downtown neighborhood plan was, or the Littleton Boulevard Corridor Plan was, because we've already said, we basically have put them in the, in the, in the chart as plans that will be updated. And so they are what they are right now, just like the neighborhood plans are what they are right now. But they are going to be updated, in fact, the Littleton Boulevard has a high priority, so we're going to update that one pretty quick. And so it's already kind of self-evident in the chart, that they're, they're documents that will be updated.
My, there's a piece of confusion here, and it's going to go back to one I was beating earlier, that starts with that "upon adoption" sentence. It seems to me that, it's a little bit unclear to me still, what we're adopting. I mean, we're adopting part, the, really, kind of a preface and citywide plan to the comprehensive plan, and I think it gets confusing when we say, "Upon adoption," the 2013 comprehensive plan, and then you say, we're in meetings, we're talking about this, any of the small area plans are going to come later, and it's hard to give a set date to this. But I don't know if we need to be more specific into, "Upon adoption of this, you know, citywide plan, the City of Littleton Comprehensive Plan will contain the following," and just talk about the dates that they were adopted. We're never going to have a plan that has a unitary adoption date, and I think it starts to get confusing when we start to try to define it that way. I think that's one of the things that you get people reading it, and they're, they're confused about, this is the whole thing, instead of this is pieces. And it really should be okay to do that, there's nobody else, except for maybe the Affordable Care Act. Nothing else gets adopted that's huge all at once, everything comes in pieces, and so we should be able to, I think, say, "We're adopting this piece right now, and this is what's contained," and just say either the dates or the ranges that they were in, and not try to say, "It's the whole thing."
And actually, that, that's one of the other reasons why there's some, there's some wording in the current version, that as you read it, it sounds like this process never ends. You know, like, like, "Upon adoption," well, five years from now, is "upon adoption" relevant?
Yeah.
We already adopted it. And so that, I agree, that should be taken out, and it should just be, "The comprehensive plan is," because it's going to last for five, 10 years, and it's going to, it's got to read like it's a completed document, that, sure, it will be updated, but you update it when the time comes.
That's right, and then the other parts can sit there, and they can be good. I mean, sometimes your update, maybe you look at it and you say, especially hopefully with something like the citywide, the small areas, I could see maybe changing more, but you might look at the citywide and go, "Maybe our goals haven't changed that much, we don't need to change it every five years."
I like it, Randy, it's easier to understand, I can see the flow to it better, without picking out certain corridor studies to talk about, it simplified it, and it, there's like an A, B, and C to it, you know, that I can...
Right.
...read and understand, so.
Yeah, I like it, too. I think the number two and three on the old section here, I always had trouble with that, because it really is part of number one. Littleton Boulevard, downtown, they're all small area plans.
They're all small area plans.
So, one, one minor issue I have, and you disagree with me... So one, one minor issue I have, and you disagree with me, that's fine, but on the corridor plans, I just have an issue with the word linear, because they're not linear. They don't look linear. They, if, if we, if we say something like, and it, you know, it's not that big of a deal to me, but if we say something like corridor plans follow and generally correspond to major arterial roads and commercial corridors, something like that.
That's fine. I think you're right.
I mean, I just look at this one, and it's all over the board, over here.
Right.
And this one kind of is too, but anyway, whatever.
I like it too. We, in those descriptions, we have figures that come later that show, maybe we just have, maybe it's just figure E. It'd be nice to reference that right up front when you start talking about the different plans. So if someone wants, if someone's visual and they're reading that, they can pop right over and say, okay, I know figure E is showing what we're describing.
Right, right.
Did I agree with what I was hearing from Ed, I think, is get rid of the first sentence?
The whole first paragraph, I think.
Yeah, exactly. It started with the 2013 comprehensive plan.
Yes.
Those two sections.
Yeah, take the word linear out, linear.
Good.
We don't need to reference the 81 plan?
I don't think so, no, at this point.
Because we already talked about it up front, don't we? No, I guess.
It's quite a few, once this is done.
We don't need to say that.
We don't care.
Yeah.
Well, to get to what Ed just said at the very end of.
When we talk about the 1958 plan or something.
Yeah.
So why do we need to reference the 81?
Another example of this kind of ongoing language was, in addition to newly revised plan, wasn't it? Of course, now I can't find it.
I think Adana had something.
Yeah, I was just trying to get his point integrated. Ed's point is just to add, as shown in figure E at the end of the first, the new first paragraph, which was the former paragraph two.
Right there at the end of that sentence.
Yeah.
See figure E.
That would be another place where I look at figure E and you have figure D, and figure D has specific what the plans are. I wonder if you didn't flip those two, and when you have this on the related area plan, someone would be able to see that map, and they could look at it as they read it, so they'd have a visual representation of where you're talking about and what they look at. And then the next page, so that would be figure D then. Your figure D would become E, and it would give specifics on when those are going to be updated. But it seems to me, when I'm trying to read and understand it, just from my perspective, being able to see what they look like visually is more helpful than just knowing what they are kind of in words and what their priority is. So it might be helpful for reading and understanding.
That sounds right to my mind.
Yeah.
What does that, that?
Stood for something, and your third bullet point, yeah.
D A C G. Is that each or something?
It's supposed to be each.
Each.
Okay, I didn't know if it was short or something I was unaware of at this point.
So let's agree, we're going to flip the, so that the corridor map goes before the status of small area.
That seems like it'd make more sense to me.
No, no, no. We'll have them across the page from each other. Yeah. Lot more lively.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any, you unilaterally said you were going to get rid of figure, the description in figure D there on one six.
It's kind of, it's kind of continued.
Any, we agree with that or?
It's kind of continued though on page 1.8 where it describes E, F, and G. Are we getting rid of those two or? Because we're talking now about putting D and E next to each other, do you want to put D, E, F, and G descriptions after the, all the figures or between D and E and then F and G? I don't know.
I think you could get rid of, I think because Randy's description is so strong, I don't know that you need the description of figure E again, if you have it right across and you can see them. The other ones you may need, but I think that Randy's kind of solved that issue.
Well, I would keep E, F, and G.
Or we could put F and G underneath their corresponding maps.
Yes.
Move them up a little bit.
Yes.
Maybe even simplify them a little bit.
Yeah, if you could just write under here, Dennis, right underneath where it says figure and stick that text under there.
Would it? I was going to mention it on the, on figure A, I was going to mention it, but I didn't. But I wonder if either on figure E or A, we shouldn't put a dot where our two light rail stations are.
Which, which figure again?
Either, either A or E, we should at least acknowledge we have two light rail stations on some map.
I think we should put them in both. You're right, because that's, those are two major points of development.
Why do we talk about the light rail stations?
Just put it, just saying, here's our light rail station, here's our light rail station.
So they're identified on our big maps. I agree with that.
A star or a star.
Yeah, something that shows them.
It would help give justification to two activity areas.
Yeah.
While they're in important areas for.
Yeah.
Maybe I misunderstood. Figure D on one six, does that stay? Description of the?
No, I think we can get rid of that.
Well.
As I understand it, we get rid of that and just go with F and G. So we get rid of E and E on top of page one six.
Well, E you could, you know, you could put that under figure E if you wanted, similar to what you're doing, F and G below those.
I think it's going to be, it's pretty similar to his description.
Okay.
It may feel repetitive to what they just read across.
I think it's funny, really. And then on F and G, you've got, it looks like you've got deeper margins on the top here. You could move the maps up a little bit and put the text underneath potentially.
I'm wondering, since you kind of go, after we leave section one, we go into the city plan, could we have this right before we go into section two? You know, not a part of it, but the last page of section one, it might be easy to reference as you're sitting there reading about what it's talking about. I don't know, we probably got you all jacked up.
No, 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 that's good.
Page numbers everywhere.
I think I'll at least wash the video. Everyone has a good memory.
Yeah, right.
I missed that last one.
So they're always to put the, I'm thinking E, which is the state of the smaller area plan, is that what you're saying?
Say that again.
Which map?
Saying figure D, the, the chart or the status of small area plans. Let's maybe put that behind all the maps, that's sort of the last thing as you go into section two, which is the citywide plan.
Yeah, we'll do that. So we would probably put F and G first, and then we would do D and E, and we're switching those, so D will be E and E will be D.
I'm adding a dot.
Put those at the end.
I thought we were putting, I thought we were putting E right after the related plans section.
No, yes.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah, that's, that's true.
Am I still have, yes. Like, I'm so like three and a half minutes ago.
It's a whole new document.
Nevermind. Keep up. Let's add a blank page here, put two over here.
And put left blank intentional.
I think, I think we may have a conflict here. I think you're right.
I think I was thinking about something else.
No, no, I think you were right, because if we're going to put that right after related plans, because that's what we're writing about, then we're going to have to do something major with the zoning map and current land use to have them.
Can't they just come next and maybe, you can't fit the, the text underneath them?
Yes, yeah, sure. I'm just, what I was hearing you say was, I thought you wanted states of small area plans to be the last thing in this first section.
Yes, I think she just said, you just moved figure D to the back of all those, and then G, F, and E, and all move up one.
So that it becomes G.
Right, but then, but then figure D, the states of smaller plans will not be next to related plans. Right, is it, is what David was saying?
Yeah, that's what I was saying, is that I thought that, I thought that the two ma, the map and the figure, figure E and D would flip and face each other.
Right.
Right.
And then the two land use and zoning maps would be next.
This is all the same.
And then I would be, I would act, I would actually be in favor of having this be a blank page so that two could be on the, on the start of the next.
Okay. The other thing we could do is we could put just the zoning map and land use map before we get into related plans, before we have the text or anything, so we could put it right after planning process.
Well, that would help in terms of going down in scale.
That would, yeah, that would work for me.
Just a graphic comment, Dennis. Are these documents usually spiral bound? I'm sorry, do we usually spiral bound our documents?
Yeah, we usually do, right. The question is if we're going to be updating, do we want something else?
Right.
We've done documents where we actually do throw punches and make something fairly simple in terms of how we bind them.
So it just bugs me that the maps run into the margin.
Okay.
That we should allow four and a half inch.
You have to do a larger inside, for the left pa, and it's going to mess you up bad until you get this in the final order, but the inside left page needs a larger right-hand margin, and the inside right-hand page needs a larger left-hand margin. So in other words, half inch around, but three quarters on the binding side in order to not clip off maps and text and so forth.
Especially the trail mark neighborhood.
We don't want to clip them off.
Really.
But, but that actually, if you make the map a little smaller, that'll, will a little more room for the text that you were going to put underneath them. Not that it takes up that much space, but.
Is that totally clear there? All that?
Yeah, no, it makes sense.
Moving a map.
Is this thing in, in design?
Part of it is, yes.
Talking code over there.
Okay, finally, we get into the, chapter two.
Oh, we did make changes to the maps too, just the, the F and G, the zoning, and we've updated those a little bit. We had some areas on that that weren't complete and weren't correct, so we've done some technical changes on those, and we're happy with those at this point, I think, and made sure that we were consistent with labeling and stuff too, so.
Okay.
That's all I had to say. Oh, and I, also on one nine D, we had the graphic, people go back and, and change so that southwest is, is very clear now as a neighborhood. We moved the corridor labels out and, and added lines to everything, so.
Whose request was it?
Yeah, there were two, there were two corridor labels in there for a while.
Right.
Yeah.
Everybody was mentioning that.
Yeah, that's good, that's what I was thinking.
From three meetings ago, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, that looks much cleaner.
Good.
Yeah, it looks good.
Okay, good. Yeah, if we see anything else, that's great. And we'll make them smaller, that's easy, so.
I'm sorry, you're going, what's, you're going to make what smaller?
We'll make the map smaller, which is very easy.
Okay, so it doesn't bleed out.
Just the light rail stations, I think I'd be able to.
And add the light rail, yeah.
All right, so now we can go to?
So two point one. I know, I know Adana had her write-up on some comments, and I agreed with some of them.
Well, Randy, I think what you just discussed in the previous section does a little bit towards helping to understand what's coming up and what the difference was, but I still felt like, or I still feel like, even with what you wrote, that we still need to come in and say what, what these two, what we're going into, because we're actually now entering into the plan, the citywide plan. And so I wanted to, to the best of my knowledge, I think it needs to go after transformative perspectives so that you're right before goals and policies, and I've got Ed's support over here too. He's, he's all about it.
Minor markup somewhere.
Is saying that the citywide plan is comprised of two sections to guide our actions. The first section entitled, whatever we want to call goals and policies, part one, goals and policies, in that, you know, it's based on Inspire Littleton, you know, you see what I wrote. Based on what we just discussed tonight, the second to the last sentence should probably not refer to future plans. We need to get that out of our vernacular, but when properly executed, these values uphold the neighborhood corridor and activity area plans that are part of the comp plan. And then it goes on to say, future planning, development, land use, and zoning decisions should reflect the overarching goals and vision outlined in these goals and values, or goals and policies. And then to talk about what comes after that section, the following section, part two, you know, whatever numbering system we go into here, transformative actions describe activities around three key areas which are of primary importance to pave the way to achieving citywide goals and policies. You know, my, my goal was to try to differentiate between goals and policies and transformative actions and what we're talking about here and how this whole document was organized. When I was just reading it, you know, going from one section to another, I couldn't really discern the importance of one in the hierarchy of one over the other. So that was why I made that recommendation. And then what were your?
Oh, just because I'm terrible about things like this, I just have small markups that just say, just, I thought we could probably condense it a little bit, just to make it a little bit crisper with the writing, but I don't think I have anything substantive that really, except for on the, I, I think it's saying, this, this is the same thing. I think we just need to be careful with our language throughout there. I think there's one area where we use goals more broadly. If we're using goals in here as a specific thing, then we just have to make sure that we're, we're not crossing up and using it in two different senses in a paragraph, and so I have that marked up here. But I could send those to Dennis.
That'd be great, that'd be wonderful, thanks.
So you said you agreed in part with this concept, Randy?
Well, I agree with trying to organize it a little more clearer. Just kind of are there. We talk about the vision, but we don't really explain what the transformative perspectives are. We just kind of put them there. And then we go right into goals and policies. And like you said, we end with the actions, and again, they're just kind of there, although we do describe underneath them a little bit of what they represent. So maybe there does need to be something early on that at least explains the structure, this is, this is the heart of it, the structure and the relationships of the perspectives, the goals, and the actions, transformative actions. Other than that, I agreed with your comment about page 2.3 where we use the word encourage. I'm jumping here, but, but nowhere else, under the other goals, do we have a, a word to begin the items? We just list them. Here we say encourage. You provided a list of how to put action words in front of them and get rid of the word encourage. I kind of like that idea. And then my last overall comment is, it just seems structurally that we should have the goals and the policies together.
This, this way.
Either that way or right under each other.
Oh, yeah.
Right now we have goal number one, and we have just, we have a page of pictures.
Makes it confusing which one's.
It's confusing.
I think with all the page changes we've made, they'll probably end up next to each other.
Or we will make them.
So I think the pictures are great, but I think we need to keep the goals and the policies together.
It's just, you organize the pages, maybe you have, somebody mentioned a blank page next to the citywide plan.
Yeah.
So it highlights it, that sets it up properly.
So this, this.
Good.
Page set is one goal, this page sets another goal.
Good.
Add in Madonna's language, which may actually help.
And so, we may want to, we may have to allow someone to craft language if we agree that we need some language upfront. We're not going to craft it tonight, it's just too much of language to try to work in a committee. But what is, what does everybody else think about something upfront to maybe explain everything?
It makes sense. I could see, though, condensing it, simplifying it, get it in there. You say transformative perspective, it's just dangling there, yeah. How do you get it to be undangled?
I get confused reading it, and this may just be me, everybody else probably gets beyond this real quick. Because of the way transformative perspectives just sits out there, and because transformative's kind of a catchy word, I hit that, and then you get me going back further, and I'm reading, and I run into transformative actions, and I wanted to go back and look at this, and I found that a little bit, I, at first I thought they were, these were the same things, and that that was setting me up for that, and it, it just threw me off when I got back and I said, oh, that's different. I don't have something else to, to put in front of that, I just, I just think that that makes the fact that that's just sitting out there kind of on its own stand out more for me when I was reading it, and I maybe circle back and say, what's going on here?
I agree, when you, when you read the word transformative, it's kind of like a conclusion. It's like, okay, this is what we're going to transform, we're going to do this to make all these goals and policies, create some transformative item, that, in that way, it fits nicely at the end. Okay, these are all the things that we're going to, we want to accomplish, and these are the transformative things that we're going to do. I wonder if upfront, it's, because we're talking about the vision right upfront, it's visionary perspectives, and at the end, they're transformative.
Yeah, that might tie that, something that attached to vision, I'm not sure if that's the right way, might tie that in and make it feel less like it was set off.
Either that or a paragraph that kind of explains everything.
Well, we do have a paragraph, you know, after vision for the future of Littleton, boom, and then we get to our bullets.
We have a paragraph for transformative actions, which I think helps with that, we probably need something comparable to that. If you look on 2-10, we have a real short paragraph for explaining transformative actions.
Right, do the same thing for transformative.
How do the transformative actions, I mean, you know, it's its own list of things, too. How does, does that guide the goals and policies? Is it that hierarchy?
No, and actually, I would say it's more implementation. It's implementation for the goals and policies, this is how we're going to get there. Transformer perspective is kind of underlying, this is our premise, this is kind of the Bible that we're using. Little different than vision, a little different, but it's kind of, as we're going through all these goals and policies and transformative actions, this is what we're kind of holding on to, is directing change, striving for sustainability, and trying to raise the bar for everything we do. That should be integrated into everything that we write after that. And then the transformative actions are saying, okay, if we've got this vision for what we want to do, what are the things that make the biggest difference? What are going to, we get the, what are we going to be able to act as catalyst for other actions that will help us achieve the vision for the plan?
I kind of looked at the perspectives as you look at all the goals and policies with these kind of ideas in mind. So it shows kind of how confusing it is.
Yeah.
Maybe they should just be goals and policies.
Can we write that, I mean, we can either move it to the back or write that exact thing where you guys pull it back at the top of where it says transformative action. As you, as you look at these goals and policies, keep in mind that this is what we're striving for, something like that.
An idea.
Well, it's, it's a mission statement, Ben.
I wonder if they're fundamental or something.
It's either a vision or a mission statement.
Yeah, yeah.
Or they could just be goals and policies, they could just be additional goals, too, really.
Could be. Which ones?
The transformative perspectives.
At this, yeah, after the fact, they may not be as important as they were during the development itself.
Yeah.
They seem like, to me, they seem that they're more foundational, you're saying, these are the foundations, we're building everything off that, rather than transformative, the primary foundational, fundamental, something that you're saying is the building block.
Fundamental principles.
If you look at.
Call, call it maybe fundamental principles instead of transformative.
Yeah. I mean, but as we're looking at goal number one, we want a dynamic Littleton, but we want it to be sustainable, we want to raise the bar, we want to, I don't know, do these even all fit together? Manage change, strive versus, yeah, I mean, I guess I don't want to go and change the whole thing now, but.
It's the problem at the end of any of these things, the hard decisions, nothing fits in line, right?
Well, I would agree with.
I mean, even, even before that, the Littleton will, there's, there's a list there, too. So, it's almost like, I don't know, when I do a planning document, you, you start with your mission statement, and, and that's kind of like what these fundamental principles are. And then, you know, the Littleton will is almost like our core values, you know? And then you have goals, and then you have actions. That's, that's what a strategic plan is. And I, I feel like we've got a mission statement through our transformative perspectives, and we've got core values that we want to uphold through this Littleton will, then we've got goals and policies, and then we've got, you know, transformative actions that will focus ourselves. I think if we call it something, element, you know, the elements of a, of a plan that make up a plan, then, then it doesn't feel like we have basically four different lists of things, and we don't know how they relate to one another. And I think somehow verbiage needs to introduce that this is what these things are. These are our core values, these are, you know, I don't want to make it harder, but, you know, when you look at it like this, you do feel like you've got multiple lists of things that we want to do, and they're good things that we want to uphold.
Right.
But it begins to be, the question of what is the hierarchy here in?
And how do they fit together?
Yeah, yeah.
I agree. I like the idea that you have a vision, you have your goals, your policies, your actions. And, and this kind of adds kind of a foreign element. Either we take it all the way out, or we incorporate it somewhere else.
They almost read like goals to me.
Why can't we just take these transformative perspectives and stick it under Littleton will? Just make.
Include it as part of the vision?
Three more bullets.
Yeah.
Done, done.
I mean, that's what they are.
Skip transformative perspective headline and move on.
Are we okay with it?
Yeah.
Very good.
Very, very none.
I've done my part, I'm out of here. Other than double dots, periods.
But I still say, then let's introduce, you know, how it's organized, you know, that we've got goals, and then we've got these actions that, you know, we're going to, that are going to direct our activities over the coming year in order to make sure that we, you know, accomplish our goals.
Yeah.
Where would we put that? Right after the citywide plan to introduce everything?
Well, how about making the, the guys on the bicycle smaller and have a little flowchart or something, a flow bubble diagram.
Another one?
Citywide plan, boom, boom, boom.
I love those.
I think Madonna's language does a lot of that, that work, it seems, it seems to me. I mean, we could add their work on it.
You change my words and send them over, because you've got the good.
I think they need to be, I think they need to be ordered correctly, too, or ordered somehow, not just tacked on at the bottom.
I'll look at this and provide an edit of my own, and send it to everybody.
Okay, and we're going to get one from Edward?
Yeah. Okay, now, that was a good discussion on just the structure of the whole citywide.
Well, it helps me, I'm sorry, that's the one thing that just.
So now, yeah.
This page, I think we just lose the goal, I'd have to say. It's a picture, too many pictures, and then we have this small little type that's the actual goal. It's underwhelming. So maybe if we can incorporate the two, I think that would help a great deal.
Opposing pages from one another, you know?
Yeah, lose that.
Either that, or put the goal and all this text on the next page, and then put all the pictures behind it. It's done that way on every one, does everyone like the goal?
It doesn't necessarily have to have pictures on every single page.
I know, I know, it's just a little too, picture overload, I guess.
So maybe goal one is all text and a little small picture.
Or, or just the bottom picture, and then have it just be larger.
Yeah, if you can fit everything on it, so.
And then the policies can be on a facing page.
The goal and the policies on one page.
So are we, are we on to 2.3?
Goals and policies on the same page?
Yeah. We not want to do that for some reason?
But we would do it, but then we'd have to do that throughout, you would think.
Right.
Well, no.
That's what we're saying.
Only the first one, the others would be opposing.
Then you're going to get away from the book deal.
If we.
Goals and policies, goals, policies.
If we have a blank page on the back of section one, the citywide plan section goes here, then goal one, policy one, are on facing pages that way.
I think it'd be consistent either way you do it, just so that if a person's reading it, they know they have the rhythm of what you look at there instead of switching midway.
One page for each, one page for each, right? Get rid of a photo if you want, but, or, under goal one, a dynamic Littleton is foster a vibrant and evolving community, that's, that's a pretty, pretty small description. And then you get into goal two, look at the description there, it's quite, quite long. Maybe we should expand on goal one description, delete a photo, but keep the one-page-one-page deal.
Sure.
Or one page for goal, one page for policy.
Bigger type.
Five words, just make bigger type.
Have you gone, Dennis, have you gone through and tried to get all the font styles uniform yet?
Yes and no, yes, I have, I noticed that there's still some that are off, but we've got a lot of that, yeah.
Goal one is Times Roman, and goal two is like Arial.
Arial, yeah, absolutely. And three, everything else should be Arial after that, so, yeah.
So you need to fix that one.
I, I agree with, I mean, policies for number one, and Randy brought this up already, I agree that it would be nice to be consistent with the way two and three go, that instead of the, you know, encourage or strengthen downtown and the colon and the explanations, just have each one as a, as a standing statement.
Capital letter.
Well, does everybody have Madonna's?
Just, the reason we did this was, I think we had that originally, and people got tired of the repetitive, repeating each of those action words, but we'll try it again and see what everybody thinks is.
Well, all of mine have different action words except two, only two repeat.
Okay.
Madonna plan. Give it a shot.
So incorporate, get rid of the word encourage and implement the action words at the beginning of each.
Yep.
And then, are there any comments on the substance of the words under goal one, policy one?
Of course, this is the eighth time we've gone over this, so, Lord.
So you're not hearing anything from me?
The only captions, captions that are different, I think, we changed one at Littleton Station a little bit, and the one for soccer, we changed the caption of that, I think the others are all the same. Yeah, well, and we changed a little bit on the Aspen Grove picture, Aspen Grove one, too.
Just a random comment, if you needed another picture at some point to make your pages work. I don't see any of like South Suburban Golf, you know?
True, that's a good point.
Someone might move here just for that golf course, I don't know.
Good thought.
Doubt it.
Very nice, it's a kind of course.
By the way, we, you know, speaking of pictures, we talk about the aging of Littleton, but I don't, I don't see an old person in any of the photos, it's all a bunch of bicyclists and joggers and.
You can take my picture.
Pretty ladies at a coffee shop.
There is a grandma in here somewhere.
That's true. And actually, the other thing is, those bicyclists, that photo was taken 1988, so those guys are now old.
We're 1.5.
I say we get Glenn back in.
Yeah, now he wants me back.
The old part, the old white part.
She's an old person right here, 1.5.
I have a good picture of Centurion.
Okay, okay. You're right there, Benny.
Okay.
We don't want to clutter up the document.
My, my last little nitpicky thing is the, the resolution of the logo is not so good on the paper, it's fine up there, but it's pretty grainy, I'm sure you have a better.
Oh, no, little.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's got some artifacts.
Good eye.
I mean, it's one of those graphic design things again, but you might look at saving it as a gift.
Okay, good.
Sure they have a high-res that they paid for somewhere.
Yeah, somewhere.
Sometimes if you use the web one on the paper one, and vice versa, you know? It makes your life.
I have been reprimanded a few times.
No, 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 that's good.
2.5, are you ready to move?
Yeah. 2.5. Policies for goal two. Well, I had a, just a, and this is something that Glenn can respond to, again, just formatting. So when you, when we ultimately get this in place, the staff's going to use it as they review applications for rezones and other things. This is really minor, but when you have to reference a particular policy, is it clear that you'll say goal two, policy one, or do we want to say 2.1, 2.3, and then if we're goal three, it's 3.1, so that when you know that it's 2.1, it's goal two, policy one?
Right down through the policies.
We could ask you 2.1, 2.2 for each of these?
So, for each of the goals, the first number is the goal, the second number is the policy, so that when you cite it in a staff report, you know what you're talking about.
Stepping back just a couple pages here, there were some changes that we made on 2.3. On 9-C, we changed that language on building heights, based on the conversation we had here. This is achieving building heights that respect the pedestrian environment of Main Street and downtown small town character.
And it used to say achieving building heights that allow for the desired mass and scale while respecting.
Okay, and then we also changed number six, we added, talk about housing development, we said address the needs across all ages, and we added Andy and Tom's. Based on discussion. And on the photo on 2.4 for soccer, we said that parks throughout Littleton are managed by, which.
Yeah, you had it, South Suburban owning the parks.
Right, yeah. It's about it, the significance.
Well, as it relates to the goals, you know, I guess this was the final big thing that I wanted to have a. you know, I guess this was the final big thing that I wanted to have us at least consider, was at the end of each goal on the document that I provided you, would we consider that putting in a statement of overarching guidance for land use cases to be evaluated that really embody that, that goal? And so, you know, I put a list that related to Goals One, Two, Three, and Four. For instance, since Goal One relates to a dynamic Littleton and relates to, you know, retail activity areas, you know, development, housing, and that kind of type of thing, that, you know, land use cases are considered about how they contribute to the local economy and support local business, whether they allow an appropriate mix of uses to keep it active, whether it improves access to amenities and contribute to services needed in the community, et cetera. You know, I don't want to complicate things, but, you know, a metric of if we have a land use case under, you know, that relates to this specific goal, we want to make sure that it embodies these evaluation criteria.
I worry about that a little bit when I read it, and just from a perspective of, I mean, the other thing I do, I don't do a lot of land use situations, but as an attorney, I look at that and I look at the questions, and I think at some point, you start to get away from saying what the policies are, and it's hard to go through every question you want, and so someone who wants to come in and make presentations on both sides, and for a board to consider, you get to a point that you have so many questions and pieces of information you have going out, that you get more conflicting information, it slows processes down. And I think the other issue you run into is that it's really hard prospectively to think about all the questions you might want to ask. So I wouldn't know what's missing from reading through this, and even probably the people who are really experienced and seeing a lot of this, might look through it and miss a question that they think is key. That question comes up and they want to ask it, and they may feel bound by a longer list of questions. So I almost hate to go outside, I almost like to let the policies sit and let people think about questions from my perspective, because I just worry about tying it up and making it actually more difficult by including. I, I also think it creates a little bit of ambiguity over what the document does, because if we say land use cases shall be evaluated, it starts to make it sound like this can dictate rather than guide. So those are my thoughts.
If I were, if I were a developer and I looked at the, this, and I looked at every single word a lot, I would, I would run from Littleton. I'm not going to say it as elegant, eloquent as you, but I just wrote down the margins, nannyism, big brother, hostage bribery, it just seemed like we were just like dictating overly, snooping into the business of developers, more so than just what's best for Littleton, but just, you know, requiring public, public spaces. Some developments don't have any public spaces, private view sheds. We don't have a view corridor really in Littleton. Mix of use, some projects aren't mix of use. I've been involved with projects where, well, you, well, you talk about how it would affect the local businesses. Well, I've been in cases where it's obvious the opposition is bound and determined to protect existing businesses against the new business coming in. So it's not a land use issue, it's just to protect the, the little guy against the big guy, or a business that obviously is going to drive some of the little guys out of business. And that's really not our, our charter to pick winners and losers of, of, you know, economic development. So anyway, I had a lot of, a lot of trouble with, with the last page and a half.
Well, I can see how something like this, you know, could confuse, in some cases, it could clarify, and probably an equal amount of cases, it could probably confuse, so. You know, if, if people are confused by it, you know, I won't, I won't push this, but I had enough passionate about, passion about this to at least put it together for consideration.
I think that's why.
Just because of the metrics that people keep asking us for, I mean, that's why, you know.
It was mentioned that they have to be in the small area plans. We have to have metrics in the small area plans to begin to, to address those questions, you know, how's it going to be achieved for Stern Park, for Kittering Park, for Heritage Neighborhood, based upon the more specific policies and goals that they have. I don't know, I don't know if questions are the right thing. I don't know if we need, want a developer to, to answer a questionnaire, you know? Prove it to us, how are you going to do this?
Right.
Will this come into play more when we get to those small areas?
Well, it probably will, so, let's just set it aside now, and, but I at least wanted to have that conversation, so, we've had it.
If it, if it, if it comes into play during the small area plans, then we could spend, we could spend three study sessions going over this, word by word, and refining it, and maybe coming up something a little more, I don't, it's general, I hate, you know, everybody's acting for specifics, but it, here you're getting too specific, and I think you're getting too intrusive as to, to nannyism. Lack of a better expression.
I like where the, I mean, this is a general comment, the limit is bothering me from last time I've been thinking about. I like the statement, policies, and I know we had at least one, I think, a couple of people talk about, there's things that contradict in here, and I didn't say this then, but it's just been bothering me. I would anticipate you have some conflicting policies and conflicting goals in here, and I think if you don't, you run the risk of doing really bad planning, right? If you just said, we just care about, we don't care about anything else, or if you said you're only going to care about open space, you never get anything done, right? I mean, you have to kind of balance things, and some of this sits in tension. And when I read through this, it seems like you have those things stated and sitting in tension. And then there's no easy way to resolve those, this is not going to solve hard cases. I mean, hard cases still are a matter of balancing kind of the hardness of the hard place with the weight of the rock, and there's not an answer, you just have to figure it out the best you can. But it seems like this is a good effort to say, these are at least the considerations you should be making when you're trying to balance out something that's inherently difficult to do.
Well, look, listen to a policy out of the small area plan, and it's, it's called a policy, but it sounds pretty specific, specific to me. And this is, this is a policy that will never happen. That Gallup Street be improved to provide an alternate route to Heritage High School. In other words, put it through. That's not a policy, that's a statement. Put it through. But that particular item is probably going to come out, because, you know, that was written 20, 30 years ago. So the neighborhood, or the small area plans are going to get pretty, pretty more, pretty detailed, I believe. And, and they're going to be eas, it's going to be easy to provide metrics for those neighborhoods, and there's going to be overlap, there's going to be conflict. I read through this three or four times already, and one neighborhood says one thing, another neighborhood says another. And so there's conflict, but they have to be resolved in the planning process when they actually get implemented, so.
What, what do you mean that one says, well, one says, we, we don't want traffic in our neighborhood, the other neighborhood says we, we don't mind traffic?
Well, I can't give just.
That's fine, that's a neighborhood decision.
Please bring on the traffic.
We have your cell town.
We have more retail, we want traffic.
That's what they all said, we live in ours, we live in ours.
Well, an example might be with Broadstone. The Stern Park has a policy that addresses retail and its impact on the neighborhood, but that the Littleton Corridor Plan talks about putting retail on the edges, and it happens to overlap with the Stern Park Plan, and so there's a conflict there.
Well, and the zoning says something else.
And the zoning says.
Conflicts with Stern Park, yeah.
Right.
And guess who wins? Zoning, I, I think zoning wins.
Yeah. So we're trying to, you know, by, by making boundaries adjoin but not overlap, by making policies, you know, or having neighborhoods participate in the corridor plan meetings, you know, everybody gets a say in how one relates to the other, and.
Well, that's why, so we really should do those corridors and neighborhoods together. I think we're going to have three things going on at once. You know, you've got a neighborhood on this side of Littleton, this side of Littleton Corridor.
Right.
That's not for this discussion.
That's interesting. So, so if we did a, neighborhoods up and down, west side of Broadway, we should be working at the same time, maybe the, the corridor plan for Broadway.
Otherwise, wouldn't we maybe do a plan that already is in conflict with one of the other plans, you know what I mean?
But doing concurrent, concurrent makes sense.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Or Boulevard.
Goal number two, page 2.4, and.
Are we going to, and.
Oh, do you have comments on?
Oh, just one quick one, are we still going to take out the word encourage at the top, and?
Yeah, we're going to take that out, and he's going to, Dennis is going to write it based upon Madonna's suggestions.
Just wanted to make sure we're, okay, go ahead.
Just Goal Two and Policies, any comments, any edits?
Policy number eight on 2.5 was Andrew's addition, so you've not seen that one before.
I don't care for it, I guess that's easy to say when he's not here, but it sounds like a Subway ad or something, I don't. And right above the picture there.
It's, he came back from the, there was a retreat that had Tri-County Health in the school district, and it was about how do you create a healthy community? So this is a talking point, and it's not really fleshed out, so.
Is that our job as the planning board, to make sure that, that's Tri-County Health's?
Well, I understand.
It really fits.
I understand the intent.
I think it's in there in other ways, in saying, let's have a nice place where we can ride our bikes, let's open the city up.
An active community is a healthy community.
I think it's covered, I don't think we need to be so.
I agree. It's not like we have food choices, and, I mean, we really only have one thing here, is the activity.
So are we saying, take it out?
I think so.
It's also dead.
Be here to defend it.
You gotta show up.
We're leaving the picture in, though.
Where is the ice skating rink in Littleton?
In Coventry.
Does that still happen?
Uh huh.
Really?
They do it in Boomer South, too.
There's something I don't know about.
You can't get in there, because you got to go past the gate.
You're not invited.
You're not invited.
What you're doing, be reading there, buddy.
Okay, 2.6.
Okay, let me just defend Andrew for a second and say, what if, like, on, on page 2.4, underneath this Mary Carter Greenway trail picture, we, at the end of that sentence, say, in Littleton, it's easy to make the healthy choice the easy choice, just as part of the caption, so he does.
The healthy choice is the easy choice in Littleton?
The healthy choice is the easy choice, so he doesn't get a policy, but he gets a caption.
So you're throwing him a bone, okay?
Are you a politician?
That's weird.
You took care of everybody.
I'm nurturing.
In Littleton, the healthy choice is the easy choice.
I'd make a lot of choices that are easy. Should I eat that candy bar?
So 2.6.
It makes more sense here.
Economic disaster, there is a price for everything.
Anything else on 2.5? I'm going to, just while we're. A little bit of time. Again, I read the comp plan again, and I marked, because I wanted to make sure that we weren't missing something. And, you know, for the, for the most part, a lot of what we've already stated in the policies are very similar to a lot of the policies that are in the comp plan already. They're just worded differently, they may be more encompassing, and one policy may, may address two or three in the comp plan, but, you know, for the most part, they've been, they've been addressed, and, and we've even added new ones because of a newer time when this, this was written. And then, and also reading this again, I noticed there's even some repetitive policies in here, to where, if you boil this down, it also is only three pages. After you boil down the Citywide Goals, you take out the comments, and you just have policies, you really get down to three pages of words. You know, there was a comment about how long our, our document is, and does it do the same thing? Well, I would say that it does. It addresses the same overall policies that create a vision for the Citywide. And we're going to, we're going to do the same thing for the small area plans. We're going to take that and boil it down, and make sure we maintain the values that we still have, and add some new ones. So I think, you know, I just want to say for the record that we're on the right track in terms of what the original document started out. And we're just, it's, it's being restructured, but I think we're still addressing the same values. Goal number three, any comments on the policies? Or the photos?
Could we capitalize and define complete streets? Policy One.
Can we define it back here?
We did define it.
Oh, we did define it, but can we capitalize it then? I didn't see the definition.
Yeah, we did define it.
Yeah, and it's a reference to a link.
Oh, yeah.
Is that a Madonna ad there?
Right, exactly, yeah.
That's fine. Can we capitalize it?
It stays up.
Yeah, I'm sure you can.
Forever. It takes 30 years.
Well, three years from now, it won't be complete streets, it'll be a different kind of street, but.
I think one of the things I've heard people talk about in the public hearings a few times, that I, unless I miss it, that I don't see that we address is parking. And I wonder if this isn't a spot to do that somehow, because we say in Number One, to reduce conflicts among multiple modes of traffic to help make the city more pedestrian, bicycle, and vehicle friendly, but we don't really talk about being vehicle friendly in here.
I would agree with that, I mean.
Well, I mean, it is a point of contention for some folks when they go downtown.
But you, does it relate to the connections, or does it relate to fostering a vibrant community, meaning supporting business through adequate parking?
I'm not exactly sure where to put it, but I think.
Let's go back to 2.3, page 2.3. Strengthening Downtown. Did we have, did we say something about parking there?
It's a great place to add it.
Well, we certainly say it in the Downtown Plan.
Yeah.
Yes.
In several places.
Lift something from the Downtown Plan and make an E there?
Actually, number nine came from, was lifted from the Downtown Plan.
So one more sentence.
Find an E, talks about parking.
I, I think at this point, we're, we're running into a situation where, you know, there's so many areas that have such worse parking than Littleton. The fact that you can't park in front of the store that you want to walk to, that's the problem that we have right now. It's not like you can't park. I've never, I've never had.
Usually have very little difficulty.
Yeah, yeah, I've never had problems parking.
I think it's something that as we encourage people to come to Littleton, that will certainly become a problem, whether it may not be today, in five years, certainly.
Well, it's a time of day.
Yeah, that's what we're, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's something that should be addressed, but I mean, it's not like it's a huge problem right now.
But I think, yeah, I think the language is consistent with that in the Downtown Plan.
And, yeah, can we look at the Downtown Plan and see if there's another bullet that we can extract that isn't, doesn't, we don't have to reinvent it, we.
Good. Well, and part of the, the discussion we've had on, on the study that will be done in 2014 for Downtown.
downtown, major element of that will be the parking program that we've been talking about out of the downtown plan.
Yeah.
Right.
And certainly in the small area plans, it will be addressed.
Right.
That okay, Kerry?
Yes, just as long as it's in there.
Good.
2.7.
Any changes on there, Dennis?
The only thing we changed was number eight, so 38, where we had, we actually had dropped some language about adopting the Vision 2335, and we just talked about the fact that it was adopted in 2005. And the discussion all the time was, this is similar to what we have in the current comprehensive plan, and it just gets updated. City Council lets us go through and adopt each time it's updated by Dr. Cox. Kind of a natural process. And 2035 has already been adopted by City Council, so this is kind of a consistent with that.
Should we just say, since we already say that it's adopted by the city of Littleton, should we just say endorse the Metro Vision 2035 plan, take out the adopt by reference there?
Yeah, the only advantage of including that is that it's become part of the comprehensive plan, so it's endorsed and it's adopted as a reference, by reference as part of the comp plan, so it's another element of the comprehensive plan we don't talk about. More specifically, but this is the one place where we actually have that discussion.
Are you saying the Metro Vision plan is part of the comprehensive plan?
I, yes, by reference.
So when we do staff reports, we have to look at the Metro Vision plan for applications?
We're applicable, but at such a scale, it really is.
Like the endorse of Metro.
I'm just, I worry when we say that, that if for some reason it changed or something like that, or the City Council, I just worry about adopting it someplace where we can't, I don't know, that we can technically-
Well, I get, it has been adopted, so it's currently adopted.
That's right.
It doesn't say we're going to adopt the 2040 plan, which is the next one coming up.
But it's not, when we say comprehensive plan, it's not, it doesn't have the same authority as our comprehensive plan, right?
Correct.
And it's more of a, it's a metro-wide linkages.
It's an agreement, we're going to, we're going to, you know, play by those rules, basically. We were doing annexation particularly. When we started expanding, their rules start applying to us. Has there been an instance in the last two years where you've referenced it in one of the write-ups for a Littleton issue? The only thing that's happened is in the last two years that we have to go back and update kind of our growth plan, annexation plan. If we were to annex, what would it look like? And that we have to do every couple of years.
Mile plan.
Three-mile plan, yeah. And that's a regional requirement.
And there's no danger of this plan changing because the next plan is the 2040 plan?
2040 plan, exactly, yeah, which is imminent.
That mean?
It's imminent?
Well, no, we're going to do this, and then they're going to do the 2040 plan.
This will be out of date.
We'll adopt it, and we'll have a statement in our plan that's just out of date until we go back, and, yeah.
Right.
That's just the way it works.
That's kind of what we decided last time, was to have it be out of date, and then have to update this plan, yeah.
So just to be clear, the changing of the words that I suggested defines the citywide plan and the small area plans as the entire comprehensive plan document. All other reports and documents, regional plans, state plans, city plans, district plans, were just used as reference.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
Or not, even the metro area plan.
Sure. Adopt by reference makes it too confusing.
Right.
It'd really be one of these satellites out here, to the pick to grab, of something that influences our company's plan.
I can't, it'd be hard to think of a justice where we do something inconsistent with the Metro Vision plan, other than annexation, some kind of major expansion utilities.
I'm just thinking in terms of a developer applicant, having to address what's in the comp plan, they don't have to pull out the vision plan.
No, you just don't get to that level detail, it's such a large scale that they're talking about.
Okay.
Well, just to bring up one possibility, with the light rail station and mineral and development around that, would that trigger something in that plan? No, really, they don't even, because that seems to be pretty important. Well, the only thing in that plan is that, you know, we have asked, and they have accepted us to be an urban center, per the downtown plan recommendation. And, you know, it doesn't have any requirements on us at all, so.
Goal four, policy in policies 2.9.
Oh, it's the, there is such a thing, word as collecting museum? Yeah, isn't that weird? I didn't realize it either, because I'd always heard that, you know, we were the only, I think, museum that was Smithsonian affiliate originally, and now apparently that's changed. Because if you go to the website and look at what their language is, it's the first collecting museum in Colorado, so, which means they actually collect as opposed to just display, I suppose. I don't know what that means. Well, I collect, but I'm not.
You're not part of the Smithsonian?
Right.
Not yet.
Transformative actions. I'm just going to open it up to all of them, including the little float chart in the back on page 212, 2.12.
We did add on page 211, number three, we added work with the city's economic development department to attract and maintain, because our development for the last meeting.
You guys will have to be a little bit careful on 2.11 if we move around some of those figures. You reference some of those figures in other spots, but they're in there, so just be aware of that.
Yeah, good luck, yeah. Still see in some areas, you write justify, once in a while you just happen to write justify something, right and left justify. Most of the time, you just- Left justify or- Like for instance, transformative actions, all of a sudden, we're back to right justification?
It's got a different font as well. The 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 is-
So, you know, that leaves, you know, large gaps between words and, you know, probably you don't need to write justify anything. You've done it under the photos, that's fine, big deal. Okay. That one actually is block, yeah.
I don't know if it matters, but just in the name of consistency, there is a hierarchy established, I think, where neighborhood plans are first, corridors are second, and activities are third. So on action item number two, focus on corridors and activity areas in the same order that they are of a priority on the chart. Corridors come before activity areas.
Yeah, I need to change the chart then, I think, because I think on the map, I think we actually have, yeah, I think we have activity areas first, we do neighborhoods and activity areas, then corridors on the map.
I see activity areas as the lowest in terms of importance, in terms, because they're, they almost, they're so-
Everybody agree with that?
They're small.
On the full chart, you have activity areas last two, so.
Okay.
I think that's-
I think throughout, you should, because the chart says neighborhood corridor activities.
Okay.
So just be consistent wherever they-
Change the map, I think there may be a couple of other places, too.
I think that's reasonable, the activity areas are the smallest areas, they're the least defined.
And they can change.
Okay, good.
They can move around.
Yeah, they're the least defined of any of the-
By the way, I think in your text, you said activity area plans, and you're, I don't know what, are they activity areas or activity area plans?
Well, they're activity areas with a plan.
It depends on what we're referencing, I think. We're doing a plan for the activity areas, like the, so you're doing a small area plan, which is in this case, an activity area. So you do an activity area plan, so for the light rail station area, light rail station area plan.
There's an activity area that has a-
We could do studies, we could call them studies, but it has a very different implication, I think. It doesn't sound like it's making recommendations, it sounds like it's just an analysis to me.
You might need to do a word search.
Yeah, and we need legality to tie everything together.
I think I need a comprehensive plan then, under the chart. It's a comprehensive plan, the circle in 2.12, it says citywide goals, little things, quarter plans, activity area, it should probably just be activity area plan.
Good, yeah.
To be consistent there.
Good.
And then you may want to just change that to citywide plan, too, at the top, but a comprehensive plan just goes in there.
Ooh, that was a good one. Good, thank you.
Did you get that, all the numbers are the wrong font to begin to action items, transformative actions?
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Yeah, they're all aerial.
Any comments anywhere in the document as a wrap-up?
Just some of these graphs are less crisp, like the 2011 household income.
I'd really mind your edits on the appendix definitions.
Yeah.
That was taken care of. Okay. We'll get rid of transformative perspective in the definitions. Any other graphs that are problematic?
Again, in name of consistency, all the titles, number one, introduction. Then you get to appendix, and it's a totally different style, and it's inside the picture.
Okay.
I think it just needs to say appendix, just like all the others in Roman, Times Roman or whatever.
Yeah, the consultant was doing it that way, and they have fancy systems.
But it's the only place it's done.
We couldn't do that.
I've got one on A11, acknowledgements. We have one section, contributing former city council members, the president has, anybody listed?
We don't, we don't know who they're going to be yet.
Okay, that's fine.
Well, you'll be Jim Taylor.
Jim Taylor, we could put in, for sure, that's right, yeah. You know the outcome of the election or something?
No, it just looks like, I just, when I see a blank, it stands out to me.
It does stand out, exactly.
It looks like slight.
TBD.
Have a holding. We'll add Jim for sure.
So you add a contributing former city council-
I was just going to put some names in.
Just randomly.
See if we get anybody stitching.
Bruce Becker.
See, your name finally showed up. It did?
Yes, it did.
I'm hitting the big time.
Now you're earning your keep tonight. Did you take off whoever's name you wanted to take off?
I'm sorry?
Someone wanted their name taken off?
Yeah, they did, that's correct.
Okay, I couldn't remember who it was.
Need to get Ann's name in there, too.
Yeah, he was serious, he had it taken off the downtown plan as well.
Well, I agree. I mean, I know Mark harps on it, too, but I agree that we just need to take a microscope and make sure that the fonts, the text, the sizes, the, everything is consistent and buttoned up.
Yeah, it sure will. They're doing kind of piecemeal, but you need to do it just consistently throughout.
Had a lot of fun, you know, the fonts and type.
It's very interesting as things move around, yeah.
Didn't know when you went to college that you were going to be doing typesetting, did you?
That's really what it is. It's kind of primitive in a way.
So any other comments? We're going to have a hearing, public hearing on the 28th.
25, I believe it is, November 25th, is that right?
November 25th.
Yeah. We will try and put this out into the public realm this week, so that would give us two weeks again. I don't think there's anything in here that's earth-shattering that somebody's going to say, I need another three weeks to review it.
Somebody will.
Yeah. But that'll be the goal, and hopefully, it'll all be clean, and when you see it out there, look at it again if you see something.
Yes, if you see anything, let us know.
Let us know, but, believe me, we will use a 40-power microscope.
So the next hearing-
Back to Kelly, too, because Kelly's very good at finding that stuff, so.
The next hearing is in front of us?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
And then you'd make a recommendation. We haven't set a date for council yet, we'll just do one thing at a time, but we'll be ready with some potential dates for council, November 25th.
Do we have a meeting next Monday, a regular scheduled meeting? Do we have something going on?
Good question.
I think we said we-
I think it's a regular meeting, yeah.
I don't believe we do.
No, it's Columbus Day, other than that, we're here.
When are we meeting again, then, to have the hearing?
Not till November 25th.
We also have a case, small case, it's a PDO, actually on Bema Street, for some amendments they're asking for, build a second home on one of the parcels there. I don't know a lot of the details, but that'll be before you on the 25th as well.
And when you go to the 25th, there's still things in here you want to change, you could make that as part of your recommendation, you could say, you know, subject to these changes before you go forward, and then we leave that stuff out of what we put forward to City Council in their staff report, we make that editorial stuff first.
And that has to be done in a motion, right?
Right.
So if somebody makes a motion, it has to be a move to adopt with these changes.
So no meeting next week?
There's more than four or five changes, it could get quite cumbersome.
I kind of doubt that.
Yeah.
Because each one has to be-
You've said it before, please.
Yeah.
So no, hopefully the only changes we'd be making would then be in response to the comments in the public hearing.
Okay, so we get next week off.
Ooh.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Return.